Good evening, welcome everybody to the regular Gilbert Council meeting of August 12th, 2025. All the meetings are at 6:04. We have a roll call please.
Counselor Verdochnik present.
Counselor Horn.
Here.
Mayor Oberstarr.
Here.
Counselor Skurvik.
Here.
Counselor Ponten.
Here.
All right, we determine the quorum. You can have a meeting. Next full hour. Would you help? Help us with the pledge of allegiance, everybody?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people of the British Isles. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in law.
Hey, I know we have a couple additions.
I would like. During the session that came up, there were three additions to the agenda. Under old business, we'd like to add motion case and assist. Under new business, we'd like to have the work order, which we'd like to start working with, and the lawnmower purchase, which would be my idea. The work order would be my idea. That's all that I have for this.
I see we have a letter from Ty. That's a follow-up, it's no more award.
It was going to, but if he's not here, there's a lot.
Yeah, a lot.
So if he's here, we'll talk about it.
Can you do something there?
It's a report from Ty.
Okay, now we, again, how many additions we have?
Three.
Three.
Okay, I don't want to put more, you're just gonna let me go off and get there, all right?
Thank you.
You mind me, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I move to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
With the additions.
My Counselor Skurvik, supported by Counselor Horn to approve the additions to the agenda. Well, let's hear it, say aye.
Aye.
I'm posting name. Motion carries. Consent agenda, counselors. We have the July 22nd working session, July 22nd regular session. And invoices and library minutes. Consent agenda and register check resumes. I'm gonna be booked, I'm standing here because I wasn't here last meeting, so. I'm not gonna take two minutes out of there, I have to stay the whole thing, okay?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
My Counselor Skurvik, supported by Counselor Horn to approve the consent agenda. All fair, say aye.
Aye.
Postine, abstain, mayor abstains. Counselor Verdochnik, Horn, Skurvik and Ponten, vote yes. All right, public input. Now, we have a hearing tonight, we'll get into that later on, uh, the agenda, the hearing for the Masabi Mountain Trailhead, what is or anything. The public wishes to address to the council, other than what's on tonight's agenda, this is the time to do that. Come to the mic and state your name and the issue and. All right. We have reports by the council and mayor. So Counselor Ponten.
I'll have an input now.
Counselor Skurvik.
Um, just two things. First of all, a thank you to the members of Gambler 500, which is part of Minnesota Four Wheel Drive Association. Um, they spent the bulk of last weekend, or sorry, the previous weekend, cleaning up garbage from around the trails, uh, around Gilbert, including the new area that will be the new DNR boat landing on Lake Orbegon. Uh, by the end of the weekend, they filled an entire roll-off dumpster with a number of items that were found around trails, um, that were illegally dumped by local, uh, folks. So, um, they came up here from all of the state of Minnesota and donated their time and just wanted to formally thank them for that. Um, second is just to bring attention to recognition of, this weekend is going to be a very, very busy weekend in, in town. There are three major events. Uh, Scuba Palooza at Sherwood has campground full, uh, Trail Jam at West 40, and then the second annual running of the Iron Range Half Marathon at the, um, Genoa Trail and the Masabi Trail. So, um, I know that Ty's team will be very busy enforcing things. Um, so, but, you know, worked very well last year and hopefully, uh, the weather will hold out and we'll have some good events here in town. That's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Horn.
Um, the only thing I have is about the wood chips up at Thompson Park. Um, Mike, can you connect with, uh, Sam? I looked at the wood chips and it looks like they sent us mulch instead of engineered wood chips for a playground. I'm just concerned that we ordered the wrong thing or got shipped the wrong.
We ordered the engineered chips, but I'll ask them tomorrow. That's not what you meant today.
Because it's essentially, they sent us mulch and I just can't imagine playing on that as a kid.
No, we didn't.
Hearing.
We ordered the engineered chips.
Okay, Counselor Verdochnik.
I have nothing at this time.
All right, uh, I see a very nice attendance here tonight. Before we get to the gist of our meeting here, I just want to let the folks know, uh, I've been hearing some rumors around telling that, uh, the council is doing a whole heck of a lot that, and these people aren't getting that attention. We're doing pretty little except for taking plastic flowers off the cemetery. That's a big deal, that's, uh. We've done a lot here this year, folks. Uh, we've got a lot of fires in the fire, we've got a water plant of $19 million on the table here, this has been going on since the night, 2021, 2021 maybe even, COVID era. And hopefully we'll be finalizing that in September here, all the dots dotted and Ts crossed, uh, and get that thing started before winter or much shortly after spring. But that's a big, big issue for Gilbert. Uh, that's a torque issue that Gilbert's needed. And gentlemen here, we've got to make sure he doesn't get very, very sick. We need, we need, everybody needs a backup, especially, uh, everyone, every, I think every job, we need a backup. And, uh, we don't have one here actually to do what he's doing. And we need that, we need another equipment operator, so we are, and we're budgeting on, I mean, sure we do it, keep the budget, uh, affordable and doable for everybody concerned here, taxpayers. We are opening a lot of things that people don't really realize, uh, other than just taking the plastic flowers away. That's been a, a 30 years of regulation on board up there, that's been on board at least 30 years that no plastic flowers up at the cemetery. And we're just enforcing that now through the recommendation of our cemetery board and our city crew up there that's having issues with, uh, these plastic things in the lawnmowers that they, when they cut the grass up there. So it's not a old, brand new issue, it's been up, been up there forever, nobody's adhered to it, and we kind of like enforcing it. But we've been doing a lot of other important stuff up here as a council. Uh, probably not, everybody's aware of that, not paying attention to TV camera, uh, TV on, uh, it's not TV, or being in here in attendance. Uh, the council's been very productive this year, and we're gonna hopefully by the end of the year, we'll be a little bit more productive on different issues too. We're working very well for you folks, citizens of Gilbert. So, we're gonna continue on here, we're gonna go through our staff quickly here, then we're gonna get into the hearings. I don't have, attorney had to leave. Fire chief is not here, we have the, he's chief type teacher.
I, I did have it on, at least from the fire department, but then I was, we didn't find out, Mark's out of town and he's first on the list, so, um, all the breathing apparatus are in place and craned and had their fit testing and everything else, and everything is in service at this point in time. I just wanted to update my, that's all.
So the new equipment with the old equipment is working? The new stuff we just purchased?
Correct.
Well, along with that matter, I do have a, another piece of information to share with that. Tomorrow, um, I'll have the 13th tomorrow, 3:15 in City of Evellis, but I, I don't feel that it'll be done. Oh, it can be. That's what Mike told you there. 3:15 tomorrow, Mike and the fire chief are gonna be there, I asked Ryan Muzzi to be there. Uh, Fayle, Town of Fayle and, uh, City of Evellis and City of Gilbert are meeting together in a cooperative effort to, to, uh, join our fire departments. Join our fire departments. Things are getting very expensive for, at least for Gilbert, to, uh, to do alone, to fire department. And so, uh, this, this study went, you know, five or six year, uh, issue back, it, it was, uh, canceled about six years ago, four years ago, something like that, but we're gonna revisit it again. Town of Fayle, City of Evellis and City of Gilbert, we realize that we need to be more cooperative other than mutual aid, so we can share our expenses, not duplicate our services, like buying more trucks than we need and more other pieces of equipment than we need, because these things are getting very spending. And hopefully that the three communities here can work together and make one district fire department to benefit all the taxpayers in all these three communities. I think this council is in favor of that, depending on what way it comes through, we gotta redo, revat a lot of the language in this thing, and hopefully it'll come to those here, but also sometime September, October, and other communities. And I, but right now I, I see positive progress heading that way. Let you folks know on that. Horace. I'll tie chief.
I'm sorry, mayor, it's just involved with 17 mile pursuits on ATV, that's why I have some dures, so, um, yeah, several thousand dollars stolen from an Armin mine, we actually caught it right hand for students, found from here, played township back to Virginia, so we have a custody. So I won't go stay too long because I have to process that, we've got 17 miles to go around these students, so, um.
Thank you.
So I apologize, so. Anyways, um, I want, when I don't have the agenda tonight, I have people question I can answer. I wasn't really prepared for me, I was prepared for an autopsy, I might come out with an autopsy.
What's your one?
We did want to discuss the software transcribing. You wanted to wait on that, or do you have that?
Yeah, I think I heard off from a pretty decent letter, I think it explained it, uh, you know, you're talking about current insurance services, uh, speaking with the, you know, with chief and stuff, I mean, this is probably a, a thing we can try to start with insurance and services. And, uh, the problem is we've dealt with more, uh, stand speaking people in the last four months than we have in 25 years. Uh, we had three instances this weekend where we had some, uh, verbal communication issues, and this software will also assist that, our body cams to actually transcribe at real time, so we can understand and communicate and stuff like that, so. Along with the redaction, uh, we have a lot of requests, partially because of, uh, Facebook and Reels and stuff for police data. Uh, apples were being gated recently, uh, we're starting to have newer requests for data, a lot of times for, a lot of times there's civil disputes, um, or child custody disputes. Uh, we have to redact juvenile, juveniles, and interstate law, we have to redact all non-subic data. So, so body cam videos are generally completely private unless police use W4s or has to, uh, show them to prevent social unrest by, if we do something that's wrong. Everything else is completely, uh, private, um, or confidential in this situation. So if I have contact with you on the streets, uh, and you request that data, I have to redact everybody, even their victims or suspects, after redact that data, they shall invoice and be able to give that, uh, to, to provide a video redactor. Um, we first bought the body cams, like I said, we bought the cheapest ones available, $20,000 for five years, we thought they'd flower, everything else was on that $44,000 mark, and I felt that it was just too much to spend for the fancy software. We've been able to get by from the last three years with the core redaction system that we have, and now because of the data that we have, you know, one big event of data could take up to hour and a half, two hours to redact a face. There's a lot of people, like you're in a parade, that will take us hours to redact the 10 minute video. So this, this, this new, of course, because of AI is the biggest thing, has been a game changer, and most of the body cams systems have included, which is why it's $44,000. Uh, this, we're looking at cutting the cost in half because we're gonna share it with apples, because we feel that we don't have enough data, we have data requests every day or week sometimes, we have the data that can heat the system, and apples can say, oh, it's a fella. It works so well that Michelle can actually help us, and like I said, 10 minute video will take one to two minutes of office time, so it goes very quickly. I didn't give the videos 10 minutes, it's two hours, once you've got the faces identified or redacted, it does automatically, so it's a huge time saver. You know, the body cams have been a great thing for us, the officer love them, uh, but with the data, I think there's, there's, there's issues. I tried to get by as long as I could, uh, but we're at that point now, we're still saving money, you know, and then I remember the Cadillac system three years ago, uh, even with this, we're gonna pay roughly $2,000. That'll also help us, uh, you can keep reports, so it'll save us time, so, um, yeah, so that's basically what it is.
Is this something you need right now, or is this a budget item, or is this something you need right now?
Well, the, the, my issue that was coming, so we did not use all the funding from 2024 that was given by the legislature, we're supposed to use law enforcement, fire, law enforcement, or fire used it for, I mean, personal radios and items like that. I use it for stuff that we need immediately, and I've kind of put it there just for stuff like this. And this will be just a winner deal, we'll try and see where I'm at, if, if, if we feel like we don't use enough, um, yeah.
Do you really, would you like to have a strength decision on this tonight?
I would like to, but again, if you, if you want to pay, well, I guess that's fine, I don't know what else they're initially looking for, but, um, if there's money there, this is not a budget item, but there is money, approximately $30,000, so you can have a comment.
Have you verified that we can split the subscription between two different jurisdictions?
I did, and the conversation we had was, like, when I talked to the, to the company, they, they basically stated that, you know, we're on the edge of saying, okay, it's a lot of money to spend if we want to have to redact 10 or 12 videos. We might have to redact 50, but, so, I was like, I didn't know what group, and he said, well, I said, I have another agency that, and he's like, well, for one year, we can do a trial basis and we'll see how many videos redacted, and then we'll, we'll go according to you, so.
So it's more of, you're paying for how much gets used, not necessarily how many people use it?
Well, it's, it's unlimited for the amount we can use for redaction, but only one person can do it, so that's how we're gonna do it, so I think we have a best to come to us. Like I said, because it's the software works, and, you know, you got demonstrations done, and you never know if it's, if it's good or not, but we actually sent their own videos to them, live, real time, and I, it was, everything he said it was, plus, it was, it was absolutely amazing, I could not believe that we were doing it the way we were. Um, but it was because of costs, you know, so, um, and now we are dealing with our data requests, especially with, uh, like I said, child custodies, domestics, anything like that, we're dealing with, we have to redact, medicals now, um, stuff like that has to redact, any questions, so.
Um, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to, to purchase the one-year subscription on a trial basis of the case guard software. Um, the only thing I'd like to add to this is that, um, I know from personal experience from an incident, uh, on my property, uh, that it took us over six hours of reviewing camera footage to get to about, uh, the 10 minutes that we needed. Um, so I know, I know personally how much of a pain in the, that, that is, and using AI software significantly improves it, it checks, it protects the individuals, it protects law enforcement, it protects the city, it's kind of a noteworthy reminder.
Yep, and the other thing too is, you know, the city council has access to us also, so if you ever have, have a council meeting that you want transcribed, we can take the audio, as long as it's a VDI file or a couple other files, we can upload it and it will transcribe every name, every person, and you just have to listen to each person, or actually look at the person's score, you know, take no more than 10 minutes to do that. So we have, so there are other, the city keeps, I think, if you take pictures of, you know, if you see them, my intuition, if you guys take pictures for city business, you take a picture of a vehicle, you see license plate, under sketch, you don't have to redact that, if it's, if it's a government problem or government data, you don't have to redact that, uh, license plate, if you want to present it to the council, like, if you take a picture of a large town plant, go license plate of a private vehicle, you have to redact that, so, I'm just getting a lot of something.
Yeah, your motion, my Counselor Skurvik, you, uh, you just paid our redaction software from Case Guard for the police department that had a cost of, our costing, you have done $21,000 here, am I correct?
No, that was, uh, $3,948. Second page. We have a whole reverse in the previous. Again, half of the, half of the, yeah. Our cost is $21,000. I'll second that.
Second, my Counselor Horn. Uh, we heard, uh, from Counselor, uh, from Chief, all important that is to this department, so yeah, we're discussing. All fair, say aye.
Aye.
Postine, motion carries unanimously. All right, do you have anything else, Chief? Anything else, Chief?
No, I'll stay by here and be private until you ask.
Um, you want to stay or?
Yeah, I, I, I see there's a decent sized crowd, so I should probably stay.
Okay. All right. Engineer, public works, bathroom, library, twerk, Mike.
I have nothing, Chief.
All right. Under that, then we can make a motion to suspend this meeting.
I made a motion to suspend the meeting and open up the public hearing for the proposed Masabi Mountain Trailhead.
My Counselor Skurvik, supported by.
I'll second that.
Counselor Horn to suspend this meeting, uh, regular council meeting at 6:26 for the public hearing. All fair, say aye.
Aye.
Postine, motion carries. All right, so I open up the public hearing. Uh, right here. Public hearing for, uh, 8/12/25 establishment of a new trailhead for the Masabi Mountain is now open. I need to, I have a roll call on that, please. Yes? Please.
Roll call, Counselor Verdochnik.
Aye.
Counselor Horn.
Here.
Mayor Oberstarr.
Here.
Counselor Skurvik.
Aye.
Counselor Ponten.
Here.
All right, you have a quorum, you can have a hearing. All right, uh, again, this is a public hearing. Um, we're gonna have a presentation by the Masabi Mountain people, uh, to the public here, and then we'll have a question and answer session, and by city ordinance, we have a limited time of three minutes per person, and hopefully, uh, and that's all, we'll have to cut you off after that, we'll be concise from the very beginning. Again, we'll have the presentation here by, uh, Mr. Sipola, I believe his name is, and to the public here and to the council, and then we'll get into a, the question and stage of it, uh, for the public and for the council. And, uh, we will take a vote, uh, at the back end where we get back into the regular meeting, not at this hearing, the motions at this hearing. Welcome, sir, please be very informative to the public here, thank you.
Thank you, counsel, thank you, mayor. Uh, how can you hear me back? How can you hear me back there? Okay.
Do you guys hear that alarm? Please, both of us.
Yeah, that would be great if I could not have my back. All right, cool. Uh, counsel, this is, this is the same picture that you've seen in the past, I've turned this towards the crowd here so they can see, uh, since the council's aware of that picture. My name is Matt Sipola, I'm with the Northern Minnesota Jeepers, the Trail Administrator. I'm born and raised in Virginia. We are a local club, uh, with members from across the area range. Um, this area of the range is very unique, uh, it has the highest density of off-road vehicles in the state, and off-highway tourism is growing rapidly. The popularity of off-roading, specifically from Jeeps, has tripled in the last recent years. The city of Gilbert is poised to capture more of this off-road tourism and commerce for businesses. The Northern Minnesota Jeepers are a nonprofit organization who supports the sport of responsible off-road, off-roading of Jeeps and other four-wheel drive trucks by providing recreational opportunities through building and maintaining trails. We support other organizations such as Trend Lightning to promote responsible use of motorized vehicles and to do our part in reducing the impact on the environment and protecting natural resources through our brand-in-aid trail maintenance program. We donate to many groups and organizations, including the Quad City Food Shelf, the United Way, Minnesota North Scholarship Program, the Call for the Cure, the Iron Rock Event, and the Minnesota Four Wheel Drive Association, and the City of Evellis. Our club maintains Minnesota's only ORB off-road vehicle trail designed only for Jeeps and trucks, known as the Masabi Mountain Trail. It's a four-mile, one-way in, one-way out rock trail that starts in Evellis, near the Super 8, and travels across state land, almost all the way to Gilbert. It's a very popular trail among the off-road community. The trail is only open to vehicles registered as off-road vehicles. ATVs and side-by-sides carry a different registration and are not allowed on the Minnesota Masabi Mountain Trail. People from all over the country come to ride the MMT. In fact, the brand of Jeep has an honor system that they designate to elite trails throughout the country called the Badge of Honor. This year, the Masabi Mountain Trail was awarded Jeep's Badge of Honor, one of only 68 trails in the country. The purpose of today's hearing is to extend the Masabi Mountain Trail into the city of Gilbert so riders can enjoy the businesses and amenities of the city. We have discussed multiple trail alignments with the city council and with the DNR, and have settled on the proposed trailhead to be located in Hopkins Park. The alignment provides the shortest distance between state-owned land and the trail and does not cross private property. I want to be very clear, only street legal vehicles will be permitted on city streets, including Hopkins Park. Since all vehicles will be street legal, trailers and parking, uh, will not be allowed in Hopkins Park. As part of our community service initiatives, our club will agree to clean up the graffiti and overgrowth on the stone walls of the old buildings in Hopkins Park and maintain the grounds of the new trailhead. Providing access to Gilbert will increase revenue to local businesses, which we'll hear more about in a little bit. Everyone knows after a long day on the trail, people need to eat. The new trailhead will also attract more traffic from the OAT park to further bolster downtown businesses. The benefits of this improved are include improved safety. On a good day, the MMT takes about two hours to get in and two hours to get out, and sometimes it takes all day. It's a long time and a very bumpy ride if there's an emergency. Adding an entrance and a egress point in Gilbert improves access to first responders and emergency services, including local firefighters and forestry service. Construction of this project would be done entirely by our club and would traverse state-owned land. We have submitted our proposal to the Minnesota DNR for review, and things are looking good. The whole area has been previously logged, so there's mostly just some tall grass and some brush to clear.
I'll talk a little louder over here, but this is our trail end of our existing trail, Evellis is on this side. This red is the proposed new route through state-owned land, you can see, this is all
state here, state here, and this is the city limits of Gilbert as it stands right now. And this is actually a, an existing trail in, uh, Hopkins Park that's already, um, it's a nice wide trail, and this is the next main road, um, which is, uh, connects down.
Oh, Matt?
Yep.
That's a horrible way to take my location.
Oh, there we are. Um, so, uh, this is, uh, the, uh, city of Gilbert, um, property limit here, and so we're just connecting right through here into an existing road, um, trail that gets in Hopkins Park. So this is where the trailhead is. There's an old dilapidated building right here, that's one that we're gonna maintain as well as, there's, I think there's a total of three of them, um, that will help clean up graffiti, um, and keep the grounds nice. Um, so, this whole area's been logged, and you can see that on this map. So, there's just some tall brush and, uh, tall grass, um, so there's a minimal impact on the environment that we might trail through. The best part is, we are not asking the city for any funding. Our existing maintenance grant is sufficient for this project, which will include clearly marked signage at the new trailhead. So, we are asking the city council and the public if we can bring business into the city and place Gilbert higher on the map for travel destinations for ORV riders without needing city funding by creating a trailhead in Hopkins Park. Again, only street legal vehicles will be allowed on city streets as they are now. I'd like to introduce to you two speakers, and then the public will have a chance to comment. Uh, I do want to make a note, if you're unable to make this meeting in person tonight, you can email comments, uh, to mskrvich, that's M-S-K-R-V-I-C-H, at gilbert.com or First up is Beth Pierce. Uh, she is the Executive Director of Discover the Range, will talk to us about some statistics of tourism and off-road tourism. The second introduction will be Brittany Chenness, she's the Secretary of our Club, who will share a couple of statements written by Gilbert businesses. Beth.
Thank you, Matt, good evening, everyone, Mayor, members of the council, everyone here tonight. Um, as Matt said, I'm the Director of, um, Discover the Range, we're the destination marketing organization that serves communities from Hemington, White Lakes, and of course, Gilbert is included in that. I just want to talk to you tonight about the importance of tourism, especially our off-road vehicles. Um, I think that, I hope that we can all appreciate that our small towns have lost population, and we need them to grow, really to attract people here to live and work and start businesses. And one of the best ways to do that really is to have them as visitors, right? So they come, they check out the area, they fall in love with it, they think it's great, and end up, they end up moving here. Um, they can imagine themselves living here after they visit. So, first, like for Gilbert, you have one of the most attractive outdoor recreation destinations in our region. Um, Discover the Range has a, you know, a subscription service to, uh, a location data, um, tracking, so it tracks cell phones that come into our area. We're looking at people that are coming from more than fifty miles away, and we, we want to know what they're doing while they're here, where they're, where they're visiting. And when it comes to that category of outdoor recreation, um, the OHB Park right up the road here is the number-one destination for visitors. That's above, um, the golf courses at Giant's Ridge, and any other golf courses in the area. It's above Red and Non-Bike Park, um, even, what am I doing wrong?
Turn it off, for a second, turn that on. Okay.
Oh, great, turn it off again.
Should I talk quieter?
Great, um, you're good.
Okay, uh-huh, and even Bearhead State Park. Um, let's see where am I now? So, a, a lot of those people that are visiting the OHB Park or else are visiting the Musawbe Mountains, whereas going with that. Um, as Matt said, OHV use is increasing in Minnesota. In 2018, there were one thousand two hundred and forty-five registered ORVs, in 2024, there were four thousand six hundred and fifty-five. So you have a growing group of users, and we have one of the top destinations in the country right now with the, with the Badge of Honor. At any given time, there are, um, over twenty-two thousand active users of that Badge of Honor app, and in the last year, they made three hundred and seventy thousand subscriptions. So these are people who take it serious, like they want to visit these Badge of Honor locations, and we have one, we have one in Minnesota. Um, so we hope that, um, we can ride out this publicity, this free publicity that we got from Jeep, um, by offering this, this temporary entrance for, for the following year so that they can get in while the road construction is happening and, um, not have to wait another year to, to come and visit us. Um, and just a little bit about Jeep users. So, according to Hedges and Company, it's a digital marketing firm, the average Jeep user, Jeep enthusiast is, um, forty-eight years old, and ninety percent of them have kids, they have an income, household income around a hundred thousand. These are people that we want, we want them to visit here, we want them to live here. Um, and they spend, every visitor to the area spends about a hundred and forty-five dollars, um, per day, that's children included. So even if we have, you know, five hundred people using the Musawbe Mountain, um, in a year, that's seventy thousand bucks they're gonna drop in, in Gilbert. And if they spend a night, you know, it's a hundred and forty, and spend two nights, it's two hundred and ten thousand. Um, and they're gonna tell their friends what a great time they had, and they're gonna bring more people here without us really doing anything but being welcoming and friendly. So I really hope that you support this new entrance to the Musawbe Mountains so we can continue to bring, you know, visitors and their dollars to Gilbert, so maybe even some of them will live here, maybe even one of them will end up being your new equipment operator, so. Thank you.
Do you have a next?
I don't like that I'm turned this way. Um, hi, Mayor, thank you for letting us speak.
Oh, sir, speak.
Okay. Thank you for letting us speak here today. I have two statements here that I would like to read. Um, one is from Jennifer Thiel with Candies and Combs. Uh, extending the Musawbe Mountain Trail into Gilbert would create a valuable opportunity for local businesses like Candy and Combs to thrive. As more off-roaders gain convenient access to trails directly from town, Gilbert is poised to become a hub for outdoor adventure. Bringing a steady flow of riders, families, and tourists into the community located right in town, Candy and Combs would benefit from increased foot traffic as trail users stop in for a full treat, snap, or break from the trail. This added visibility and customer base would help support local jobs and strengthening this small-town economy. With its welcoming atmosphere and sweet offerings, Candy's and Combs is the kind of hometown business that makes Gilbert memorable, making the trail extension a win for both outdoor recreation and community growth. All right, and then the next one is from, uh, Lieutenant Russell Rask of the Fire Department. Dear Mayor and members of city council, Gilbert's identity and economy are deeply tied to the off-road community. Jeep, ATV, and side-by-side riders come here not just to enjoy our trails, but to support our businesses, connect with friends, and participate in charity events. Without them, Gilbert would not be the town it is today. At times, it feels like the off-road community is misunderstood or even unwelcome. It's, if access into town becomes more difficult, we risk losing a large part of what makes Gilbert vibrant. The proposed Jeep Trail connection would make our town more accessible, keep visitors here longer, and provide family-friendly daytime activities, something we need beyond our current nightlife focus. One of the best examples of this community impact is the Call for the Cure Charity Ride, which raises funds to fight MS, multiple sclerosis. This event draws riders from across the region, and a trail connection would give them access to more routes and communities, increasing attendance and fundraisers, fundraising. This is more than a trail, it's an investment in Gilbert's future, its economy, and its character. I urge you to approve this project and show the off-road community they are valued here. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Lieutenant Russell Rask. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, Matt, for what you're saying, I hear a motion presentation. Okay, uh, anybody from the audience who should come to the podium, state your name, where you live, uh, in opposition or in favor of this trailhead bringing Gilbert, or you got any questions for the present, the people who are here, the Sipola. Anything, you have a podium?
Yeah, I got something for each one of the council members. For the record? Sorry, I didn't have a lot of time. Oh, you have. I want to trade you.
Hi, there's a lot of people that know me here. Um, I'm Mary Kay Randall. I own a house on 317 St. on the corner of the park. I'm the only house on the corner of Hopkins Park. It is my grave concern that, first of all, it has never been mentioned that we plan on using Virginia and Nebraska as our way down our street. My mom's ninety-two years old. It is not conducive, we've owned that house for eighty years. I really have a problem with, could be up to fifty to a hundred Jeeps coming down, yes, it could, we can't guarantee that it wouldn't. But can, first of all, the citizens of Gilbert shouldn't be placed in a situation by the city government of Gilbert to contest a proposal of a special interest group in our right as homeowners to have a peaceful, quiet neighborhood with reduced traffic. And I have to read this quick, because I got three minutes, I guess. If the city of Gilbert is going to single out one road, Nebraska Avenue, to inconvenience the residents that live there, then they need to just open up all the streets of Gilbert because you're only considering one road. There are access points from the trail to other streets as well, you cannot make this an inconvenience for just some residents. The OHB Club has street legal vehicles, which means a trail can be developed that isn't in residential areas to access Gilbert. There are other options. You, you shouldn't be inconveniencing our neighborhood. During the school year, the street proposed for the OHB Club has a bus pickup for the ch, with schoolchildren for Rock Bridge at the corner of Nebraska and Summit. The traffic from the access point is a safety issue for children, for schoolchildren. We cannot control what happens up there. You have a trail, you can't control it. There is no way that you can control all the traffic that's going through that area. The road proposed for access for the Jeep Club is unusable from, at my street, and by the way, it is currently locked because of the criminal activity that's happened up there, all of the, 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 uh, stuff that's happening, and I'm sure that Ty can actually, uh, he can back up what I'm saying. That is not in a safe area already, and it isn't now. If this is for the convenience of accessing the city of Gilbert, the convenience is for a few, at the inconvenience of many residents that live there and pay taxes. The only access to businesses at that location is down the park road identified as Nebraska and Virginia. It's connected to a children's park, and it frisbee golf recreation, and safety is a concern in the whole area surrounding Hopkins. Residential areas should not be the pass-through for recreational vehicles to local businesses. There are existing months of sizable traffic and problems in the area connected to the park, and the increase is undesirable. The purpose affects, the proposal affects the whole city of Gilbert because once the club has access to Gilbert's connected trail, they have access to all of Gilbert residential areas, not just businesses, which is a strain on residents. Because of the lack of police force to enforce existing laws, and it's not twice more, we have only, we share with biwadic. So there's a big safety concern as far as us sharing with biwadic, as far as, it already is, just so you know. Because of the lack of police, police force to enforce existing laws, currently there's limited ability to safeguard the residential areas of Gilbert. There is an existing problem with vehicles that are licensed and not licensed that are already considered the area by the Parker Four Wheeler Trail.
Mary Kay?
Yeah.
What was done?
Well, I don't know, I've got a whole list here.
You have, you have a whole bunch of?
I understand that, but I should get some time, just like they have time to propose what they did say.
They had their time already.
Yeah, they had about fifteen, twenty minutes, why can't we have more than three?
Because there's thirty of you.
I agree with that.
What?
You still have a little more time to wait.
Well, please, please, go ahead, look them up, help them out.
Because of the WPA structures at Gilbert Hopkins Park, it can be considered a historical site, this is the third time that the Jeeps have tried to impose on our residential areas in Gilbert. The first time they wanted to put an access trail by Alaska Avenue. The second time they wanted to come up my street, that was about fifteen years ago, and we shot it down that time because it was not a safe thing to do. Now you want to put one through Hopkins Park and Nebraska, both proposals were voted against the first time. The residents of Nebraska should not have to contest this again. Large property value losses because we live right in front and on the side of an ORV or OHB trail access point. No one will want to buy our houses where the proposed access is to Gilbert is. Who's going to compensate us? Noise from constant vehicles, mud throughout our streets, which only get cleaned two to three times a year now. It doesn't provide anything to all Gilbert residents, just a few. We have elderly and children in the area, the park has a nine P.M. curfew, which isn't paid attention to now. There's no guarantee people won't be driving all over the, the park past curfew hours. There's no guarantee that they won't be accessing that trail. You can't guarantee us, and it's not fair to put us in a position where we have to defend ourselves, basically, like we're having to do right now. You know, our safety of our Gilbert residents is at risk, especially at late night. Me and my mother live together, we're both old. I'm sixty-two, my mom's ninety-two. I shouldn't be put in any kind of a position to be unsafe. Our safety of our, so we only have a part-time piece since it is shared by waddies like the Wild West now in Hopkins Park. Hopkins Park proposals for the park should benefit all of Gilbert residents with park line, it should be in the best interest of a few. The city has a lack of funds and limited manpower for existing city operations. In the future, upkeep will need to happen due to extensive traffic worn by the taxpayer. There will be an added cost to Gilbert residents for upkeep. Our current streets are already in bad need of repair and don't need added needed traffic. There's unforeseen costs going to the city residents.
I'm sorry, Mary Kay.
That's all right, we got to, Carl. I'm gonna say one more thing, though. On Nebraska Avenue, they were proposing to fix it two, about two or three years ago. It's about at a cost of about six hundred thousand dollars. How are our streets supposed to maintain this? We don't have the funding now, our city does not have the funding now. How are we going to maintain this on the cost of taxpayers? I hope that you'll consider what I'm trying to say, that this is a very serious situation for me, and by the way, I love this town, and I understand that some people like it also. But I've been here my whole life, and I plan to stand up for it, and I will. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Kay. Thank you, Mary Kay, we did a very, very good presentation there, very good. Anybody else? In opposition or favor, come to the podium, state your name and where you live. Your opposition or your, uh, favor?
Well, I'm in favor, my name is Jeff Ward, and I come beyond half of the Call for the Cure, probably you guys is a black for this year. Um, I understand your concerns, Mary Kay, for the scare of the unknown of what could happen to your neighborhood and your streets. Uh, the Call for the Cure's been coming to Gilbert now for twenty-one years, we've raised one point seven million dollars for the MS Society. The off-road community is not a pack of bad people. I think the park has been in place now for, well, over twenty-one years. The crime rate tide, I don't think, has increased because of the park. I think the Masabi Mountain Trail has been in place now for numerous years. I don't think there has been one police report or incident filed due to activity on that particular trail. Those are all issues, I think, that are, not issues, but they are facts that should be brought up. And it's a city street now that legally we can drive down. We, if we get access to that trail, we could come out and you can make a left or right. You don't have to just go down one street because they are street legal vehicles. They will have to have an off-road sticker, which means they also have to uphold to a sound testing that to get it to park. This isn't like the Wild Wild West days that some may fear that could happen. We're talking families. When you talk about the tourism dollars, I fit that description to a teen, fifty years old, three children, two grandchildren. My parents are in their seventies. They join us when we go Jeeping. We're in bed by ten-thirty. We don't go to any of the bars in town. It's probably been fifteen years since I've been in one. I don't drink alcohol. I am a crime statistic of what the off-road community is when it comes to Jeeping. Is there bad apples in every activity? Yes, there is. Can we control a hundred percent of the people? No. I think that falls into Ty's job. And I'm gonna apologize for the last speaker. They make it sound like you don't do your job, nor do your other officers. So. Anyways. That's all I have to say is the craw for the cure could benefit from it. I don't feel twenty-one years of doing this, this event in town that the people that would attract for that trailhead access into town isn't gonna cause any trouble for your citizens. That's, that's all I got to say. And here's you guys, it's black.
Anybody else?
I'm Diana Sepic. I live on New York Avenue, and I'd like to say wonderful job, Mary Kay. Very good, and you've done a lot of research. I find it really interesting that all the people who are pushing this so hard do not live in Gilbert. And I know they would not want this in their neighborhood. And I don't care if they used to live in Gilbert. They don't live here now. I live on New York, so I'm not right by Summit Street or. I'm not as close as Mary Kay or affected, but I walk my dog up there all the time. I ride up there all the time. And it's, this is gonna be a nightmare with all the traffic up there. There's already so much traffic on that street, and they never stop at stop signs. They just fly through. I've seen it myself. And there's a lot of drug dealing going up behind the park. I've seen people up there dealing drugs all the time. So it's a bad situation to start with, and Hopkins Park is one of the most beautiful things we have in this town. We have very little in this town. And people keep saying, well, this is gonna bring a lot of business to town. This is gonna benefit the town. We don't have hotels or motels. We have a couple of restaurants. We have a bunch of bars. The Holiday Station, who's it gonna benefit? I don't know. So anyway, I just wanna say I'm very opposed to it. It may be a good group, I don't know, but people don't want this in their neighborhood. Put it somewhere else where it's not gonna bother people. It's not gonna be in a residential area. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else who wanted to speak in favor or opposed?
I'm gonna drop one copy for y'all, so.
My name's Andrew Casalu. I'm husband, father of two. I fit the demographic. Thank you. I fit the demographic very well for Jeepers. My wife and I, we raise our kids Jeeping across the country. We moved here thirteen years ago from, never get a public speaking. I moved here thirteen years ago from Lower Michigan. I'm on, I'm a member of the Blue Offroad Association. I'm on the Board of Directors for Minnesota Four Wheel Drives Association. So I'm representing both groups today in support of this extension from the Sali Mountain Trail. DOA and Minnesota Four Wheel Drives Association have a very long history of supporting Gilbert and the Minnesota DNR. We've joined in your Four Wheel Drive Rades. We volunteer for trail clubs, developing new trails. And, you know, we support like events like craw for the cure. The Four Wheel Drives Association hosts every three years up here our annual convention. So we bring in an event each three years for that. And then many of the clubs that we represent also are having events. Ladies Rock Offroad Club, I think they do one at least, but maybe two. This coming weekend, local, sorry, a Minnesota business, Iron Rock Offroad, is hosting an event up here at the West Forty Campground. My family and I will be staying at West Forty this weekend. And then two weeks later, we're gonna come up for Labor Day weekend, stay in the city campground. We visit here two to six times a year. We honestly often skip the MMT because it's a one-way in, one-way out. And I think that's gonna impact the Jeep magic on our trail over time when people start to learn that. So I think, you know, for Gilbert to see a real benefit of having this extend all the way through will be an excellent thing. I know one of the things that we do as a family every time we pop here is we sign the posters, we pick up some polish strips and something else to throw on the grill. My kids now are sixteen and eighteen. We've been coming here for thirteen years. I would have loved to stop at Hopkins Park at the end of the trail and let the kids run around the playground. Look forward to giving them a grand kid someday, hopefully. So I think adding a direct connection through Gilbert would give things like mine more opportunities to join, enjoy the MMT. I for sure think it will impact good businesses in Gilbert. We always go to one of the restaurants, Nick's, or it's for pines. We certainly get ice cream because my kids can't live without it, like most of ours. And then, you know, we do all the other things here, too. We bring carrots. We've done inflatable park down at the Orbyon, you know, so where it's born, all the things we spend our money. I, I budget a thousand dollars a weekend on all of these Jeep trips. So it's a lot more than a hundred forty dollars. The Masabi Mountain Trail, I think, is really unique. It's the only one in the state. Brittany pointed out that there's only sixty in the country. The really unique thing about it here is it's a natural trail. So it's not like the tailings in the off-road park. So we get to see some, a lot of different things. My kids know. My favorite thing to drive past is the cedar trees every time that we start a trip. We enjoy it year-round, whether there's snow on the ground or in summer. Just wanna drive home that we really support this. I also would add that having moved from Lower Michigan, you know, in support of our people coming from out of state, I've had groups of friends from Michigan drive twelve hours, probably four or five times now, to come and spend their weekends. Actually, they've spent a week here before. So people are really coming for this off-road, you know, dude. And they're good, upstanding citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the audience?
Hi, my name is Jeff O'Brien. I came all the way from Lakeville, Minnesota. I lived in Rochester, came all the way from Rochester, Minnesota, to the Indian Prairie. Came all the way from the Prairie. I've been coming up here twenty-one years. Gilbert is like a home. I love this town. The town is surrounded entirely by two parks over here and a trail system over there that we don't really have access to when we stay at Shurley Forest. You gotta drive down the side of the highway, you gotta drive down the road. Tires are expensive. People don't have access. Safety concerns. There's a whole bunch of things that, most of them I couldn't publicly speak here. So there's a whole bunch of things that adding access on the side of town does for the community. And we really enjoy it here. We want more trails. We want better access. I've been coming here twenty-one years, and tonight is the first time that I've ever driven up to that park. I didn't know it was there. I would have loved to enjoy that for a long time. I would have, at least the last twelve or fifteen years, if I'd have known about it. But my guess is people go up there, they do vandalism, they straighten things, graffiti. They deal drugs, apparently. That'll go away. Best thing you could do is open up that park to off-road community. Like, us an access point there to go through, access the trail, enjoy the trail, and then come back into town and go to campgrounds. I think that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One more audience? No gain to the console right after the audience portion here?
My name is Leo Skirving. I've lived in this town since nineteen fifty-one. And initially, I was very opposed to having any access for this rock trail, whatever you call it, Iron Range Trail. And a couple of things I'd like to point out to the people that you, you may or may not know. Number one, I, like the mayor, are totally opposed to having people driving through our streets in town. However, these are street access vehicles only. They are legally, they can legally drive on any street now, be it up, up the hill, downhill, around the hill, whatever you wanna call it. But the initial thing that you should not understand is, as I understand it now, Nebraska Avenue, the gate up nearby, where Mr. Roddick, whatever, he was. State, I'm sorry. I know you, I just, I don't, I, I don't have the mentality to remember everybody's name. Anyway, initially, and I agree with the mayor, we do not want people driving through every street in town. However, you gotta understand that this, this proposal that Henn Trail proposed is an entry and entry and exit place only, and that would be, I believe it would be the next street over where the gate is open now by the church. And technically, they can drive on any street because they have, by state law, they are legal to drive. So I had to swallow hard to accept this, but I think it's a better thing for the town to accept progress rather than to fight and be against something. So my point of view is, like I say, I've lived in this town seventy-one years, since nineteen fifty-one. And you have to, sometimes you have to bite the silver bullet to make progress go. And I think this is one of the situations that you just have to accept progress and control it the best we can. I think these people are good. They want recreation, and I think we should offer to them. It's good for the community. People don't realize that the businesses pay forty percent of all the taxes in town. And my taxes are, never mind, they're high, but you have to bite the bullet sometimes, and you have to accept progress. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Leo. All right. Any more audience? We're waiting for the console. Have a console that would say so there?
Hi. Hi, I'm Donna Sodder, and I was Prishern. I'm Donna Prishern. I lived in this town for thirty-five years. I still have a Gilbert, Minnesota address where I live now. I love this town. And all my question is here, from what I'm hearing, why I'm opposed. And why, why do you have to have access through Hopkins Park if you can come on the road? You have road access. Leo just told us that they can go on any road they want. So why can't they come from Pulse Park or Downtown? And why can't they use the businesses that way? Why do they have to have come through Hopkins Park for that? Or up through that area? I, I guess I'm kinda confused why you can't just take a car to your vehicle and get your kids and go for ice cream right down the main street like everybody else does?
So it adds trail mileage. So it adds more obstacles on the way to get there. So it's not just a street road in, in the woods.
But he just said it's grass and, and grassy knoll and stuff up there. Not, not a lot of bumps and bruises and stuff. I'm kinda confused why you have to come into town. And if I lived right here, and I will come back to Gilbert to live, I will buy a room here when I'm ready to. I wouldn't want that. Some, we had a garage sale at Curren's the other day, and that noise traffic was awful up there. I said to Barney, take a video and bring it to the city council. Because this was crazy. They revved their engines. They were all Jeeps or off-road vehicles. They were not four-wheelers. So I am against, I, I know I'm not a citizen, but apparently neither of you guys are citizens here either. You don't live here. You come here to visit. I have, I do spend a lot of time in Gilbert, practically, you know, daily at the cemetery. And everybody knows that about me. So I, to sit here and listen to this, I just, I don't quite get it. Why can't they just come to town like the rest of us do to get ice cream? And if they can't drink and drive, how are they gonna use the bars?
Right.
And they can't use the restaurants like the rest of us do? What would that mean?
Because bars, though.
Excuse me? Excuse me, I didn't hear. If you're, I mean, we do have a lot of bars in town. We have restaurants, we have ice cream shop, Darling, Kosher's, I go there all the time. But you can drive your vehicles right there anytime. If, if, there must be a reason Evelyn only allowed you to have one way in and one way out and not enter Evelyn with those machines. I like Jeeps, but anyway, that's all I have to say. I know I don't pay taxes here, but I didn't know that.
Thank you, Donna. Answer that question. Why?
Yes. So our current trailhead is in, near the Super Eight. That's the one way in, one way out. It's a really long way to Super Eight to travel all the way through Fifty-three, and then if we were coming, we'd just dig it into Gilbert Thirty-seven. Every time we're on that trail, we get to the end of it, we say, gee, we can see Gilbert, but we can't get there. I wish we could go there for lunch. The, one of the questions was, why can't you drive your vehicle to the edge there? Well, we have to stay on the trail. This is a trail extension through the state land. The DNR is going through processes to make sure that this is okay as well as the public hearing. The whole red line is in addition to the trail. We can't just drive anywhere willy-willy on state land. It has to be designated on the trail. And this is part of the trail extension tool so we can get to Gilbert, so we can use the businesses. Right now, when we finish the end of the trail at Super Eight, as we started, we go to Boomtown. We go, you know, some other place in Dallas because we're not gonna drive all the way over here for that purpose. And a lot of, a lot of people camp in the campgrounds here. Almost all the Jeepers that are around the area that stay overnight are in the campgrounds. That's one of the questions here is, who's gonna benefit? Well, the campgrounds benefit. That's where they're staying. They don't stay in hotels. They, a lot of them do, but a lot of them say we be local here. I wanted to make one note about volume of Jeeps. I didn't mention that much earlier. On an average day on this trail, there'd be a handful of Jeeps on an average day. That's a Saturday or Sunday. Weekdays, hit or miss. A few here, a few there. It's a narrow trail. It's a difficult trail. There, I think the most I've ever seen on that trail at one time is ten Jeeps. It just, it physically will not fit a hundred Jeeps or fifty Jeeps like it was mentioned earlier. That just, just, that would never happen. That can't happen.
And it's only open during daylight hours?
And it's only open during daylight hours. Just like the park has, is a dawn dusk. Just like the park has, as a dawn and dusk, a trail is also IDNR, specified as dawn and And the crime and drug scene, you know, the park, I get it. When you've got an area of town that nobody ever goes to, that is sort of breeding ground for those things to happen, and if there are people that use it and it's well-kept and there's more people in public and jeepers around, that's one way to fight crime and those activities.
Thank you, Matt. Any question by audience?
I have a question. So you say that, but how are you going to monitor this? How is this going to be monitored? If it's not gated, you're going to have everybody and their uncle up there in all kinds of vehicles. So how is that monitored?
There is no monitoring, it's currently not monitored. This is a public, public trail, anybody that wants to use it can use it.
So you can't ensure my safety is what you're telling me? And I live right down from there.
And nobody can ensure anybody's safety.
But it isn't more insured now because the gate's locked on that side.
The gate may still be locked, we haven't discussed that. Our trail's closed at dark and dusk. It very well might stay that way.
Might. That's a, but if you can use my headlight in where I live, in my neighborhood, as in my, either it has to be a really concrete answer?
Well, our concrete answer is our trail's closed at dusk.
No, that's not a concrete answer. You have no way to monitor that. I am telling you that that area is always just random with four-wheelers and everything else, and it's going to trample on doors. And I'm sorry, that's a problem for me. And all my neighbors that live there, daddy lives there, he lives on my street. We have a gated block, but we're not because of all the traffic and all the recklessness that's happened in Hopkins Park. And you can't guarantee whether it will be more or that it won't decrease. That's a problem for our license.
All right. I'm going to close the highest portion here now, I need to get to the council, do we get, Mr. Speaker? Anybody from the council? I will start from the council. I'm going to thank Matt and his staff that come in here and, uh, who then? One more? Go ahead. All right, one more.
Thank you. My name is Don Syphil. I do have Gilbert roots. I don't know if anybody's here, Leo perhaps, my grandfather, Matt Syphil, had Syphil Grocery in Gilbert right on the main street. And my uncle Harold Anderson and William Anderson built their home on that site from the lumber from the Syphil Grocery back in the day. I rode this trail with my son, Matt, just last weekend, I believe it was. My brother's up in Michigan and we took him on this. This trail cannot be traversed with a four-wheel. You could not do it. Cannot be traversed with a motorcycle. Probably cannot be traversed with a side-by-side. We're talking about gigantic boulders, perhaps, perhaps as high as that table, that these types of jeeps go over and around. I think Matt told you it's two hours in and two hours out, and the whole trail is two miles long, or that's an average speed of two miles per hour for the entire duration of the in and the out. And even at two, I can tell you, we weren't anywhere near two. We were at dead standstill or bouncing over a rock. Perhaps the rolling terrain has grasses and trees, but the course that they're picking is specifically for this type of jeep activity. I think Matt's jeep has forty-two inch tires that have to be deflated in order to traverse this, and this is common in this type of activity. So we're not talking about speed, we're not talking about volume. The trail is one vehicle wide, you can't literally pass, somebody has to back up, off to the side if you meet opposing traffic. And with that speed limitation by virtue of the terrain, we're not talking about like four-wheelers coming through town and buzzing up and down the streets and all of that. So I just wanted to point out a little bit of the topography of what this actually is. It's totally different than anything that's available over at the OHV park, and that's why this is an ORP park or trail. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Maybe we're getting more courage to get up here now.
One-twenty Union Jersey Avenue. Just one thing I want to point out, I understand as neighborhoods, I'm not trying to discredit that side of things. The one thing as someone that's lived across Iron Range his whole life and has transplanted to different areas, unfortunately, a lot of our Iron Range towns are diminishing because the mining industry, as we all know, big industry. One variable is tourism. It does bring in a lot of financial monies to communities. I know as a business owner on that Iron Range, tourism is a very large influence, especially in the summer. The one thing to keep in mind, I understand it's going in residential area. These people have money they want to spend in the community if they can get to the community. If they don't get to the community, they're not going to spend their money, they're going to go to other communities in the area. And it's one of those, you talk about needing to have money for taxes to raise your roads, fix your roads, things like that. Unfortunately, if there's not businesses to be supporting the taxes, there's not going to be the money based on residential alone, and that's where a lot of our towns are struggling.
Thank you. All right. I'm going to get to the council portion so we can have this public hearing soon, and there was some good comments here. Thank you for everybody sharing and stating your case for or against. I will say, I'm a progressive guy. I like progress, okay? But not at a cost of, of hurry, a neighborhood, an area, you know, like the boundary waters, we can do it right, but we can do it in better way, we safe, do it right. Mining up there, I've been a miner all my life. I think we can mine up here, we can do it safe. But I didn't hear nothing here about protecting the people on Nebraska Avenue here from nearby. Sound-wise, volume-wise, the street has costed six hundred thousand a couple of years ago, now it's two million dollars. And now it's going to be even more damage. I don't understand, let alone coming to Hopkins Park, then now coming down Nebraska to get to Louis Street Park. Now, see, that's the whole problem. I wish you could come to Gilbert some other way around Gilbert, down in the less residential area. And we stop in about two hours' stretch with no houses around, not even a fire, I think around. That's not the problem. The problem is going through the residential area town. I knew your speed, Leo, I understand that. I don't know. We have a, I don't think we want to have a raceway, that's why we don't try to stop Speedway up in Summit Speedway now with the stop signs that we had from, you know, I heard tonight, there's more racing going on than ever, I hope that ain't true. But this is the problem. I am not in favor of disturbing a residential area anywhere in Gilbert here. I wish you could come, make a trailhead that is less of a hardship to the residents of Gilbert. I don't know if that's how that can be done. Some other part of town where it doesn't affect a huge residential area, and that'd be great, that'd be more than helpful, that's support your efforts. I've been hearing for those folks, not the person on Dakota Avenue, doesn't matter to them how much traffic is on Nebraska Avenue, what it matters to Nebraska Avenue. And I'll have to stick up for Nebraska Avenue today. And Dakota, if you plan on moving over here. Nowhere in this town, I wouldn't want to have that kind of traffic amongst a little residential area. Please come, anyone else around town, come to Gilbert, we'd love to have you here, not disturbing the residential area. That's my point. Anyone else?
I would just like to bring up the fact, twenty-three, twenty-four years ago, the state of Minnesota DNR, along with our city, along with our citizens, got together with an idea of the OHV park. At the time, it was something far out there, it's never been done before. It's the first one in the state. This was going to define the Iron Range. So at that time, the citizens, the city, the state came to agreement that, hey, this is probably the best option for our region, right? Gilbert was lucky enough to be chosen as the home location of the OHV park. Right now, we have a trail that runs through by the campground, runs by our own city councillor. As an avid trail rider myself, and when I'm out there on the trails, the state, along with local municipalities, have been investing millions in the last couple of years in our trails. Whether we like it or not, the Iron Range is the recreation destination of the state when it comes to off-road vehicles. Gilbert is poised to be right in the middle of three major areas for off-road vehicles. Unfortunately, with Gilbert, we have a lot of, we don't have big factories, we don't have manufacturing, we don't have a mine in our backyard, we have a couple of local businesses, a couple of local, you know, places you can shop. But other than that, we don't have a lot of source of income. And if Gilbert turns its back on future expansion to recreation, especially that it's not costing us anything, I just fear that, you know, this town, we're not going to be able to afford a lot of this stuff going forward if we don't act now well, it's abortable. I am personally pro this, it's street eagle vehicles, you don't need to define the route if you don't want to define the route as a city council. Once they enter city streets, they can legally do it with as they please, and we have no control over that. Yes, there's always going to be bad apples. Thankfully, we have an amazing police force here that can step in and do that. But yeah, there's, that's where I stand on this.
Thank you, council speaker.
I'm going to try and be as brief as I can, but first I do want to just very specifically address Mrs. Seppic, Mary Kay. You're probably the two most passionate people on this, and please understand, I am listening to you, your issues are extremely valid. I was born in nineteen seventy-one, and I lived my entire teenage life here. I went to Gilbert School, I played in Hopkins Park. I remember a time when we had regular city-sponsored events for the Fourth of July up in Hopkins Parks, and we had other buildings that were up there, and we used them. I remember those streets lined with cars. I remember people having fun. Like I said, I remember playing in that park. I rode my bike there just about every day in the summer. Parks are meant to be used. That's the reason why we create them. We create a public space for people to recreate, to have fun, to enjoy their families, to enjoy their kids. That's what Hopkins Park was created for. And we now have an opportunity for an organization to come in and help us revitalize that. Any law enforcement individual that I've ever encountered has told me that the best way to decrease crime is to shine a light on it, to create civic activity. This will do that. You will have more activity in Hopkins Park. The drug activity that you see up there right now, those, hold on, hold on, I have the floor, man, I have the floor. That type of activity that you see on a regular basis, the more vehicles you have up there, people that are doing criminal activity try to hide in places. You have more activity up there, and you will have less drug and unlawful things going on. Those buildings that are currently up there, the few that are still standing, are nearing a hundred years old. They were born, they were built at a time when the Works Projects Administration needed to employ people, and they wanted to do community good, and they wanted to create this place for citizens to use. I drive up there, and I will tell you, in the last three days, I've driven up and down Hopkins Park twenty-one times to see if any of the residents would notice the increase of traffic. I have a log of times and dates that I went up there. Two of which, Mary Kay, you or another person in your household were outside, and you didn't seem to notice the problem.
Yes, we did.
Well, you didn't say it at any time.
I'm starting to get sick of this. You're trying to make it sound like, like we're not paying attention. We can't judge around those, everybody's enjoying the day.
We have to be in order here. I've been at the chance.
It's pretty hard when you've got liars.
So I, I'm going to ignore the fact that you just called me a liar.
No, I'm right.
My best interests have always been for the city of Gilbert. That's the reason why I put my name on the ballot, because I care very deeply about this city. My husband and I are in the process of building a house. I've lived on my campground property many months of years. Yes, I have another house in another city, but I am up here for every single city council meeting. I have never once missed a phone call from a constituent, because it is absolute. Today, I took three of them from people that were concerned about this issue. And I took the time, I took time away from my business to listen to their issues, to address every single one of them, so that they were fully informed of this. The last piece that I will speak to is defending the business community in this city. Now, I'm going to draw a very straight line between why businesses matter in this town. Our budgets are very, very tight. Right now, we are struggling to come up with money to fund twenty-two air packs. We could only fund fourteen for our firefighters. We don't have the tax dollars. We are struggling to repair crumbling infrastructure. We are struggling at just about every aspect of our budget. Businesses in this town, business property owners, pay a twenty-five percent premium in an line item that's called fiscal disparities. That line item has averaged two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year directly into the general fund. That's two hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year that residents don't have to pay because it's on the backs of businesses. Additionally, the tourism industry keeps businesses like Circle K, Whistling Bird, Wandering Pines, all of the other businesses up and down Main Street, keeps them alive. Circle K, for example, just went through a merger and was purchased by a company in Canada. I've gone through six mergers in my business career the last twenty-five years, and I will tell you one thing that is for fact. When mergers occur, corporate officers look at three categories: failure, mediocrity, and success. And they put every single location into one of those categories. This Circle K was clearly in the mediocre category. The one thing that saved it was tourist activity. If you want your gas station to close, start denying tourism in this city. If you want any hope of a grocery store, you need to support tourism. Thirty, forty years ago, the city of Duwabik went all in on supporting Giant's Ridge. They are half the size of us right now. They have a bustling Main Street, they have businesses up and down, and their residential taxes are far lower than those in the city of Gilbert. So this is a vital, vital issue for the city of Gilbert to support. And that's why I close there.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Can we have the audience respect who has the floor, Carl? This is important.
Yes, it is. When you know what this must be, it's probably is.
I have a tough job here, I'm damned if I do, damned if I don't, you know? I'm trying to be fair to everybody and give everybody the fair response and applause and criticism, but in order, at the microphone, not at will here, you know? I know Washington is a zoo, but we don't need to have it here. Please, okay? I'm trying to be fair to everyone. Uh, I'm trying to be fair to everyone. Anybody else on the panel?
Yeah, just a couple, a couple of questions for the Jeepers. Is a gate behind Super One, do you have a gate there that closes off the trail? Will there be one erected?
Uh, no, there's no gate, um, at the trail access, um, at Super One. We do put, we do close, uh, two times a year for spring thaw, also deer hunting. Um, we put big signs that say trail closures. We post that on, uh, the website, DNR's website. We have a lot of, um, social media, so that, that's our trail closure, uh, but there's no gate.
So are you, that's the dogma, are you, are you determined, you know, so you wouldn't go on there at any time?
Just as long as I've been around, I've talked to people that have been on the trail, way longer than I have. People don't do that at night time. That's just a bad idea. In the community, it's just not something that anybody would want to try.
Yeah, I guess it's, um, it's certainly not the Jeepers' end. Certainly not the kids that don't follow rules and stuff like that. And do you all trailer in Jeeps to destinations, or do you drive some of them?
The street legal ones are driven most of the time. Um, the non-street legal ones, uh, that have access, uh, at the trailhead at Super One side, Super Eight side, um, uh, they are trailer.
So you have an area there that you.
There's a parking lot, that's right.
Would you be doing that in Gilbert also?
No.
I guess that's the only questions I have.
Anybody else on the panel? Rudy?
I want to address. So, um, to address, uh, uh, council comments issued with the gate, one of the things I did talk about with Sam Lotterer was, um, whether or not we as a council, um, should require having a gate, uh, to close off Water Tower Road, um, as part of the project, and it's one of the things that I talked to Dr. Siblo about, um, and his team, and they can include that in the pro, in the project. Um, regarding the rest of the gates, the Nebraska Avenue Gate, that's a decision that this council, previous to us, made a decision to gate up and close. I don't anticipate that that gate opening. I, I won't support that because there's houses there. Um, it's much smarter for us to have the Virginia Avenue side open. Um, and if we want to also include with this, if we move forward with this, a requirement that our police department close off that gate, um, at certain times, at the, at the ordinance times for opening and closing our park, we have the ability to do that. Um, and so if, if citizens are really wanting that portion of the, the park to close, we have the ability and the authority to do that right now through existing ordinance. We just need to designate a person to do that.
Right. Okay, uh, one last point. I would like to make, before we close this, like I said, I'm pro-progress, and I'm all for progress, except for when it's gonna cause some problem, okay? Uh, listen, we'll talk about our budget and taxes here in town. I wanna let the folks know that, uh, um, property taxes do not pay the whole bill in town. Nowhere, not any community. They pay maybe forty percent of the bill in town, maybe close to half in Gilbert. We get from the state of Minnesota, we depend on the state of Minnesota, send us more than half of our hundred, hundred percent of our budget, like sixty, seventy percent. That's, that's from all your income taxes throughout Minnesota, and fees and all this other kind of stuff. So if I have a, we have a three-million-dollar bill here to run Gilbert, one million, seven-hundred thousand dollars may come from St. Paul's. And we need the difference between that and the three million dollars that we need, which is one-point-three-hundred thousand, and that's where the property people come in, taxes. But we don't want to ever get to the point where we pay the whole three million dollars. Please, God forbid that ever happens. We'd have to move into somewhere, I don't know. That's everybody's problem, every city, every, in the whole country, problem. Not just Minnesota, not just Gilbert. So, yes, property taxes are important, but, and other things are important too. Non-home state taxes, no, so please, everything counts, and then everything matters. But again, I, as much as I'm for progress, I wish, I welcome progress. Golfing, I don't golf, bring a golf course here. I don't care, you know? Uh, I'm all for OHV park, but as long as it doesn't disturb a neighborhood, it is, they, they got something important, they got something to say. Everybody's got something to say, but it concerns them. Good or bad, we all have opinions, and that's where it should be. Respect them opinions, and vote accordingly. Again, I'm in favor of all kinds of progress, all kinds of businesses, as long as it doesn't affect the, uh, the livelihood of the people in this town. People in a certain area shouldn't have to be disturbed, so o, o, other portions of the town can thrive. That's not fair. Let's make it fair, let's make it even, let's do it right, if there's a possible way to do it, that's my take on it. With that, I think we can adjourn this meeting. Public hearing. Somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion to close the hearing and return to our regular council meeting. I'll second.
Motion my council service, what would I ask for, Hunter, to adjourn? Public hearing at seven forty-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I, who's the name? Motion carriers, we thank you all for that, for this hearing. And this will come up, the vote will be coming up here on this, coming up, we want to say.
Over the trail?
Yes.
Oh, I think it was on seven, seven eighty-nine.
That's on agenda. This one could be tabled, we'll see, okay?
I got the box working.
Uh.
This, I heard about this yesterday.
No, I had the hearing, we had the hearing, but I'm gonna open up this regular council meeting, and we're gonna get to a motion to pass for this meeting, and I'll let you say a few words in discussion time, okay? All right? All right, so open the council meeting. Practice regular meeting at seven forty-one. Twenty-seven forty-two. All the councils are present. Our regular meeting of eight, twelve is now back in order. We have, uh, old business, Massali Mountain Trailhead, right? What are we gonna do, vote on that tonight?
Given that people are continuing to comment on this, you may want to table the motion for now, or you can take a vote, so that the council members can make a decision.
You also wish to do it. We refer it with, as a public hearing, in opposition and in favor. Um, also wish to do it.
I'd like to place forward a motion, uh, for two things, um, simultaneously, just so we can keep moving on this. Um, first of all, I would like to, uh, move that we instruct uh, the city attorney and the city clerk to draw up language, uh, for an agreement between Massali Mountain Trail and the, um, and the, we brought the Minnesota Jeepers. Uh, the second part of that motion is to, uh, table a formal vote on a yes or no until August twenty-sixth, so that we can extend the public comment period for anybody who wants to, uh, write to the clerk, uh, so that we have an opportunity to review that in this council.
Okay, I have a motion my council script to, uh, basically have the clerk and, uh, city attorney deal with the organization, Massali Trail, to, uh, come to a formal vote on it, uh, August twenty-sixth here. Again, we, and in the meantime, the public can, uh, send letters to the council of opposition or in favor of this, the trail, based on tonight's hearing and what information was said. And at that time, at the next meeting, we'll take some more comments, okay? Um, do they have a second on that? Do they have a second on that?
Yeah, I'll say it, man.
Second, my councilman. Well, I think, uh, it's a basically a good motion, and we can digest or review it tonight for another two more weeks, and then and then take it up at the next meeting after more review, more comments. Okay, all in favor, say aye?
I have a question, last discussion. Is there a timeline for this trail? Is there money spending, um, you have to have? And is there a certain time?
There is no timeline. Uh, we have a two-year grant cycle, and we use every two years. We apply for funds, we get a two-year grant cycle. We just started our second year grant cycle, so we have, uh, two years of time to use those funds. Um, uh, as far as timeline, there's that progress parkway construction that's going to impact our trailhead on that side. Um, but that's, uh, not a real large concern, but we like to look forward.
So any of this, uh, trail improvement cannot be done in winter or the winter?
We do use the trail in the winter time.
So you could approve it also if, uh, conditions allow?
If conditions allow, um, it would be, it may be hard to see the train, um, in the wintertime, uh, but we have marked it with flags, um, so, uh, it may be a little more difficult, but that's in the late fall, fall, you know, when you find time to.
Okay, thank you. I have a question as well, on the agreement with the train. Is that gonna be true? What are you committed to do?
Um, the intent.
The unit which they give you?
Yeah, the intention would be to set guidelines, um, that would address all of those specific things, like the gates, um, and, uh, the alignment and things like that. So we could make an informed decision on a set, or a set, uh, kind of group of guidelines.
Well, you say you could keep the one on Nebraska, close it open, one on Virginia?
As it is now correct. And, and I would be in favor of that.
So the people in Virginia would not be affected more than the people on Nebraska, and that gate would stay locked? Is that what you're saying?
Well, once they get, once they get down to Summit Street, they could go down Summit Street in the direction, they could go down.
Either gate though, Nebraska gate or the Virginia gate?
No, if we, if we leave the Nebraska gate closed, and we have the Virginia gate open as it is now, really, once you hit Virginia and Summit Street, we're talking about traffic that is dispersed. Um, and one of the things, and I told the club this from the very beginning, uh, I was actually, uh, rather upset to see the proposal to begin with, um, until I had a chance to talk with them. Um, and under no circumstances would I want a scenario that dictated a from Summit Street to, you know, Main Street direct route. Uh, because that would definitely increase traffic. But if you have something that is diffuse traffic, where people would be coming along Summit Street, or Florida Avenue, or, I mean, you know, Virginia, or any of the streets up there, you have less of an impact on every other house, on any other access.
How would they know how to get to the park? No sign.
People will follow their GPS. Just as most of them do now. The trail will be marked in the system.
Yeah, we're watching on the table, on, on a floor to table, this basically, the table gives another two weeks to vote on it. And we'll take up that vote, but I still hear going through town, that's all I hear. I don't care who here, the town was featured on, I'm still going through town on the council. All right. Motion to table, uh, Councilor, I'm, how do you vote?
I seconded the motion.
Who votes?
I vote yes.
Councilor Scriber?
Yes.
I would say yes. Councilor Hunter?
Yes.
Councilor Brotson?
Yes.
Let's table for two more weeks to clear up some matters, and take up a vote at our next, uh, August twenty-sixth meeting, all right? Five to zero. All right, what else? We have a whole good business. Thank you all for coming here. Cease and desist.
I'll send to group board the cease and desist order, that's the attorney, and he has drawn.
Anybody want to make a motion to?
I mo, I move to approve the cease and desist.
I'll second. Motion my councilor, what would my councilor? Scriber to approve the cease and desist, uh, request, but also. We'll clear that out. In favor, say aye?
Aye.
I, who's the name? Harry. What else, sir? What else on the list?
I, please, you're.
I think we're still gonna be needing my honor.
I just want to be, uh, the type of rude behavior, this type of behavior of the audience there, just talking, and talking over everybody is unacceptable. It's not, you know, we, we, we. I'm not here to be, there's some, well, council members.
Okay, that is, that is, I can't, I did that, Congress guaranteed, and that holds for Congress. Okay, I'm here. All right, what else, what else?
Uh, I think we're out of the business.
All right, who business? We're in the business. Steve Brandt, um, we got, we got to do the Steve Brandt fence application table, man. Uh, that's what we have.
I motion to table Steve Brandt fence application. Two seconds.
Please, Councilor Hunter, what would I, Councilor Brad Houch, on the table, Steve Brandt fence application? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Who's the name? Motion carriers, five to zero. Gilbert County Church request, I think, uh, we've done in the past, if you can reiterate. And they come to the service down here, and they come.
Thank you.
That's, uh, I would like to motion to accept their requests to use the, use the.
I second.
I'd like Councilor Scriber, it's, what would I, Councilor Hunter, to put, let's put the Gilbert County Church in a session? Yes.
Even holding on, it's because, you know, this is, this is from several times since I've seen this council. And it's times near tonight, and we follow the law, so here we go, here. Does not see this, you should start in this. And this is basically, I'm sure, one of those charges, nothing is as high as these. Because starting out as one ten years ago, now it's five gates, and what is you talk? I'm the whole, you guys.
I think the, what is, the speaker was from monetary.
That's what he says. We've been through not charging them some monetary. And I've heard this in many cities, and they all allow it. I don't know why we do it. I'm gonna vote no.
If we gave a hundred dollars, it's a story.
We can give it in any form, it's a donation.
Um, this is something that we have commonly done. We have precedents for this over years and years. Uh, we give one belief for fees for our hockey arena for organizations, but we, we certainly center for Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts. And we've done it for this church in the house. We bring the fans to work, Knights of Columbus, Jesus for Bingo. Um, we do it all the time. It's not a very common thing. It's not a.
That's why you have a gambling card, because a mall owner will not do anything like this. Well, donate, then donate to the gambling.
I acknowledge that, and I, I agree with you, but we should have a donation for, we should have a gambling, we should work on that. Uh, but that's not what's in front of us. What's in front of us is a pasty sale for a cool number of organizations that has donated to this town in many ways throughout the years, more than I can count. And we've done this commonly, uh, for organizations. I see no reason to.
You know, people have these taxes, you know, for years and years and years, and they go to these, uh, so big data price, the key schedule, what the key schedule allows. I, I don't get this. They've been denied in the past. I'm totally, I'm voting no.
All right, uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And this is, you have the Councilor Scriber, if you. And also Strubik and Counselor Horner? My name was, what was it?
I, I rescind my second.
She rescind her second? I'll second it. But also Strubik, second by Counselor, Mayor Overstar. Any more discussion? Long vote here, Mayor Overstar voting aye. Counselor Strubik?
Aye.
Counselor Vrtajnik?
No.
Counselor Horner?
No.
Counselor Barnett?
No.
Motion fails, see the two. Counselor Strubik, Mayor Overstar voting yes. Counselor Vrtajnik, Counselor Horner. Counselor Barnett voting no. Motion fails.
Hey, just a quick question.
For you two.
Would you like Brian's legal opinion on this, or you just want to move forward compared?
Well, he gave it before he left, that's what he was talking about. Because we already asked him that question.
Okay.
And he says it's illegal.
Fair enough, thank you.
What do we got else under, uh? As you see, Wayne, Wayne, uh, concrete, twenty four thousand seven hundred fifty bucks. For the two locations, we spoke at their working session, correct?
Correct.
Somebody want to, I'm okay with this, also?
I just had a question about that trussel, you know? I wonder, I don't see why it has to be replaced when it just can be patched up. I don't know. Maybe C C Wayne can explain why they think that needs to be replaced. I can see the cracks in it, all I saw was just block marks. Maybe I'm looking at the wrong spot, I vote no.
I, there appears to be some confusion.
Yeah.
Because my perception was that it was a big die in paper and all through them.
No, it says fifteen inch.
Die in paper, so he's incorrect, I would like to make a motion to be able to clarify that.
Right, yeah.
What impact, whether you can get it done.
Because the dimensions are fifteen inch by six.
So I always knock the standard, I don't show me what he's talking about.
Yeah.
So I look at it as closely as you did, while we can do that.
Yeah, that's what I would recommend too, get very.
You're making that motion?
I make that motion to table this until five in the morning.
Motion by Counselor Barnett to table this, four thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, can you second on that?
I second.
Second by Counselor Vrtajnik. Any more discussion? Long favor see aye?
Aye.
And votes in aye, and motion carries to table, give order. What's the mention? What else you got under D, what's that?
Uh, under I D, you have the roots of lawnmower, or the campground.
It's D.
D and Delta.
Or something else?
Work orders.
Work orders, we want that motion.
You say you want a motion to move forward and utilize that tool to watch projects and ensure that they happen in the city? We need a motion for that.
Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
To establish a work order, the public works.
Move by Counselor Vrtajnik, voted aye.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Strubik to, um, start a work order procedure in the public works department. Any more discussion?
That's not for just public works, that's for anybody in this town. If there's a leak, if there's something for the police, if there's a fire, that's a tool to be utilized for all departments, not this one.
All right, all in favor of this? Any more discussion? Long favor see aye?
Aye.
And votes in aye, aye, Mayor Overstar voting no. Counselor Cotton, Strubik, Vrtajnik, in one, voting yes. Motion carries for the one. No, we have what the lawnmower.
Um, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and purchase the, and this would come out of the campground, campground fund, correct? Is what we had talked about. Um, to go ahead and purchase the John Deere version of it, includes the, the attachment for the mulch control. Um, it appears to be the lowest bid.
No, the, the.
Toro is the lowest. The Toro is.
Toro is the best deal for aftermarket prices.
Oh, okay.
And that does include the, the mulch kit?
It doesn't seem to be.
I'm not aware of it, does it, does it, if, they all have that option available, some are three hundred dollars, it's not being awarded.
They are, they are. So that's, that's why I'm here, that's why I'm proposing, because the difference between them is about five hundred dollars, which is the, which is the attachment. So it does appear that that does include the mulch component on the John Deere one. Um, so that's why I'm making a motion to vote for John Deere.
I think if you look at that, you're looking at the tax on the Toro and that.
Yeah, that tax is probably. Substantially lower.
Okay, so that, okay. So tax on it, sales tax is seven hundred dollars. So then it comes out to ten, well, it comes out to nine, five-ish.
Okay, let me, lowest price, that's why we got three quotes.
Let me change my motion to go ahead and move forward of the Toro quote. But, but to also, to also include the mulching option in there.
Yeah, I don't know how much there is, it's five hundred.
Motion. But if it impacts this to the point that they aren't the lowest price, then we'll have to bring back the gate. I'm not going to, you know, this is about finding the best value out there. It appears to be the best value out there, their parts are way cheaper than John Deere. Service is better, we have another Brown Master, Toro, that's, I don't know what you paid for, sixty, seventy thousand dollars. You know, so we've had, good luck with that equipment, most golf courses use that.
I mean, and the point is, I, we need to move forward with this.
I agree.
I've seen the machines down there, they are, it's time to replace them, so.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Counselor Strubik, supported by Counselor Vrtajnik to, um, purchase the Toro lawnmower for the campground.
I have a question.
Counselor Horner?
So the five season sports invoice is showing a 2023 Toro, but it's labeled as new. So is this something that's just been sitting around for three years? We're on 2026.
All I saw was the state city, they showed them, they have a brand more, seeing the show, right, you know, what year it was, or ask that question. New is, it'll probably service for two years.
I don't, I don't believe it has any problem in parts.
No warranty will probably, that's the thing, you know. But I just want to say again that that mulching kit, even if it goes over a little bit, I, I still look for this machine also.
We've seen that everybody's in favor of having mulching kit on.
Yeah, and if it does go over the.
There, there could be, there's good things about mulching kits and bad things about it. It's a personal preference, but if everyone thinks it's the best thing for our campground and works for the campground, the people who live there, then that would be the way that I support that too.
Wouldn't that signal it would be interchangeable where you could take it off? I know that it could cause plugging, it could cause plugging, that's the only thing. But if you do it in the dry weather, you shouldn't have a problem. I just concerned about safety with that.
Well, that's your eight clock or something.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Mike, does this one have a roll cage on it too, or the roll bar?
It's a heavy duty, it's a sure game.
Long favor see aye?
Aye.
And votes in aye, motion carries five zero. I think I said, Tom.
Then a motion to adjourn.
Six, oh, or E, what's that? All right, so we want to move to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move by Counselor Strubik, supported by.
I'll second.
Second by Counselor Horner to adjourn at eight oh three, long favor see aye?
Aye.
Votes in aye, motion carries five zero, good night, thank you for coming.
I'm just saying, you do.